Welcome, Williamsport City Council Meeting of January 31st. Please rise for invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Lord, I ask you this evening to bless the people of this city, of this Commonwealth and of this nation. Bless the leaders that they've chosen to make good decisions on behalf of all of the city's citizens tonight and going forward. Help us to have the vision and the wisdom to guide us through both periods of uncertainty, in whatever form that takes, and in good times and bad times. Protect us and protect those whose task it is to protect us from any harms that may come our way, whether those be here at home or abroad. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item on our agenda is the approval of City Council meeting minutes dated January 17th, 2019. Can I have a motion a second to approve those minutes?
Go move.
Second.
Hearing motion in a second. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those are approved. Next item on the agenda is limited courtesy of the floor. We've had one request for that this evening, and so I asked Scott Miller, 822 Tucker Street, to come to the dais and remind him that he has our standard three minutes to speak on a matter that is on our agenda this evening.
Scott Miller, 822 Tucker Street.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council President, other council members, mayor, and staff. The thing I'm going to be talking to is number nine on it, ordinance amending Article 117.1 fee schedules. I think we should be commensurate with the other jurisdictions in Pennsylvania on our fees, but I think we also should be commensurate with the other jurisdictions in our fines and our enforcement of the codes as they are on our books. Last year I did FOIA, two years, for two years, not a single person was cited for not removing their snow. Mr. Girardi can tell you, I visit him frequently. When I found out last year about people being cited for blowing grass into the streets, I said, "I'm gonna make sure that I don't." And I'm not going to say that you don't ever get that little bit, but, you know, some people abuse it. And so when we're adjusting our fee schedules, we need to make sure that the fines for violations of any of the codes are commensurate with other jurisdictions in the state of Pennsylvania. And I also want us to be similar in our enforcement, just as Loyal Sock and South Williamsport are. I can't speak to Old Glicoming Township or Woodward Township, but if they're going to do it and we have that same law, then we should be doing it too, I believe, in equality. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you as well. Next item on our agenda is a presentation and review of the 2018 city revenue collections by our city treasurer, Nick Grimes. Mr. Grimes, how are you this evening?
I'm doing well, how are you?
Good.
This isn't an action item, it's just a review that we do annually. After we close our books, get all our revenues in for the year, turn over uncollected taxes to the county, we like to review with City Council the different collections that our department have received for the year, so you guys can see how the changes have been and where our collections stand for each of our different taxes. So I think you all have a packet that should look like this, it had a memo on the front of it, and that was given to you two weeks ago. That breaks down all the collections. And what I'll do is what I do every year, just go through each page and give you a summary of what you see there, and then answer any questions that you guys may have. So on the first page, it's a city revenue collection comparison report, and that shows the different tax revenues that we have that come through my office, comparing 17 to 18. The real estate taxes were up a little bit for 2018, but it wasn't a large amount, and that's because we didn't have a tax increase between 2017 and 2018, so the revenues stayed pretty standard there. That number's gonna be a little different than what you see on the other pages, because the other pages show the face collections. It doesn't account for discount and penalties, because that's what we have to compare to the duplicate that we're given. This is the actual collections, after discounts are taken out and penalties are added in. And then, I'm pleased to report that this year we had over $800,000 in online payments. That's a system we implemented a few years ago, and it's really working well for our office and convenient for the taxpayers. Our business privilege and mercantile together, they're down in collection dollars. Business privilege is down, mercantile's up, but the gross receipts that that's collected on are actually higher. And the reason for that is the mercantile rate is lower than the business privilege rate. So even though there's less gross receipts in the business privilege category, there's even more additional receipts in the mercantile tax, but it doesn't add to the same dollar amount because it's a lower rate. So that would just indicate that our service industries, our rental industries are down a little bit in the city, and then our retail and wholesale are up. And it doesn't necessarily mean that we have less of those businesses operating in the city. In 2017, it was our highest year of collections, and we found a lot of accounts that were never on the books, so we collected, you know, five years of taxes all at once, which inflated that number, so it's sort of leveled out now. The delinquent discovery, that's sort of the new money that we find, and that's our audits that we do, people that haven't paid taxes or paid incorrectly. And the reason why that's down is because we've really hit most of those major businesses that we haven't had on our books before in the last two years. We do have a few businesses who still haven't paid after our audit and our assessments have gone out, and will probably file a few of those in court this next year. Earned income taxes down. I can't give an exact answer to why that is. I would assume that some of it is the wages of people living in the city, but I would also assume that both because the business manager and the tax office manager are both new over there, it probably slowed the disbursement of money down a little bit to the city. Local traffic fines isn't a large dollar amount, but you can see it was a considerable increase this year. Magistrate fines, that's what comes from Page and Frye to the city, that's up a little bit. The delinquent tax claims, that's what comes from the county tax collections. That's from the taxes that we turn over to them, the uncollected real estate taxes. That's up, and that's right around a million dollars, so we turn over around a million dollars, get about a million dollars back in delinquent collections, and nearly all the real estate taxes are collected each year. And then the realty transfer tax, that's just based on these sales that are within the city. We get a half a percent of each sale of a property within the city, and that's up. So our total collections are up a little bit in the city for 2018, but it's relatively flat compared to 2017. Do you want me to take questions on each page or just go through the report? The rest is pretty quick.
Yeah, it might be okay to take questions on that, because I know that is a lot of information all at once. Any comments or questions on what Mr. Grimes just discussed? One question I had is the line item with the audits brings in mostly business taxes, mostly either business privilege or mercantile taxes, correct?
Correct. That's been all of the audits so far in that line item.
Right. And so, do you have a sense of whether those in the prior years when it was higher were primarily bringing in mercantile tax, or were they bringing in business privilege tax?
Of just the audits?
Of just the audits.
Mainly our audits are business privilege, because they're different itinerant businesses or businesses that are just operating here for a short period of time.
Okay.
Usually they come in from outside of the area. You know, if we have a big expansion in the hospital, that wasn't, you know, looked at the contractors and subcontractors that came in that work here for a long period of time, generate receipts within the city. If they didn't know we had a business privilege tax, they may not have paid if they weren't followed up on, and then we would find them, and that's where most of our audits have come from.
Okay. So, the reason I ask that is, I wondered if, I think you said the mercantile tax is the one that we had higher gross receipts for in 2018 than 2017, and business privilege was lower on the regular business privilege and mercantile tax, right?
Correct.
If it had been the reverse, that would, might help to explain, we've gotten some people started paying, and now the numbers are gonna be up in a sustained kind of way. But it sounds like they're unrelated, because those audits are really for short-term business activity.
If we have a business, just if we say a restaurant, for example, that would pay at the mercantile rate, if they just have never been on the books or still operating in the city, our first step would be just to send them returns for the years that they owe. And then, in most cases, if they're still operating in the city, they'll just pay all of that back tax, and that'll be in just that regular business privilege and mercantile category.
Okay.
It's really just unique circumstances, people that don't feel they should pay, paid incorrectly on larger accounts that really get audited.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Mr. Allison?
One question regarding, we knew that some of these were going to go down or level off because of the amount that they had risen, because you were doing a really good job of hunting down unpaid or unassessed money. Do you have a round figure of how much was brought in over and above to get us?
If we just look at our assessments in the delinquent tax claims over the past few years, and then if I try to take a wild guess at all the new businesses that we brought on the rolls, I would guess it's over a million dollars over the last four years since we really started to enforce and really look carefully at our business privilege tax rolls.
That's a substantial amount of money that our city treasurer has diligently worked to bring in.
Thank you.
To the treasury, so thank you for that work.
Thank you.
To invoke what Marlene Whaley might have said in such situations, ditto. Good work on that. It saves property owners quite a million dollars, thanks to that work, so that's to be commended.
Thank you.
Other questions on the first page? Okay?
Second page is pretty simple. That's just the real estate collections broken down by month. The original duplicate shown at the top at the face amount, then the face collections below that for the total collection, and that shows that we ended 2018 with a final collection rate of 92.8% of the real estate taxes. And as you can see by that chart, the majority of our taxes are collected at the discount period in the first two months.
Thoughts from anyone? Just point out that we make an assumption that we're gonna collect 92%, and budget times, which in this case prove to be a conservative number, and that'll will prove itself out at audit time for the 2018 year, I think, you know, to make the numbers look slightly better as a result of having the 92.8 number, so thanks for that.
The next page shows you how we got to the number of what we turned over to the county for uncollected taxes. It's not just as simple as here's what our starting duplicate was, here's what we took in, here's what's left. So it starts with our starting duplicate, shows that we had eight additions or interrums, which would be mainly if people improved their property partway through the tax year and would get an interim bill for that improvement. We had 16 abatements, some of those are veteran exemptions, fires, but the majority of them are the LURDA exonerations that we give each year, which shows the total taxes due for the year, and then it breaks down the regular payments at face, the interim payments at face, the other adjustments, which are $1, and that's if somebody sends a check that's five cents short. Instead of us sending it back, we just adjust the bill down five cents, so we don't have to go through the process of sending that check back, hoping we get the payment. So there was a dollar adjustments there, which leaves the $913,847 that we turned over to the county for collection. The next page, really the number that I like to look at here, this shows our total collection. We're very pleased that this year actually was our lowest percentage of real estate taxes that we turned over to the county since this document has been keeping track since 1988. But it shows a number of parcels. And in 1988, we had 9,826 parcels. Today we're at 9,032, so an 800 parcel difference. Now that's not all bad. You know, the hospital's bought up a lot of properties and a lot of properties that weren't doing, you know, too much. Some properties were, but there were properties there that were left vacant. The hospital still continues to pay the taxes on that property as if it was there. So it comes off of the tax rolls, but we're still receiving the revenue from it, and they've, you know, made a lot of those properties look nicer than what they were. So, not all of that's bad, and some of them are just consolidations. You know, if we get a big building that was built where there was 12 different parcels before, and now it's parceled as one, that would certainly take parcels away from the And then the last page just compares the duplicates. I honestly don't know why we put this in there, but it's a document that have always been provided to you guys, but it just compares how the duplicate for the city is compared to the school district for the total amount of collections. You can see it's about evenly split. School district tax rate is higher, but they have the homestead discount that comes off of their properties for people that live in the properties that they own, so that's why their total duplicate collections is closer to what ours is with a lower tax rate.
Is that figure just for the parts of the district in the city, then?
The homestead?
No, I'm sorry, the numbers represented on that page, is it only representative of the parcels?
The school district parcels in the city.
In the city, not the full school district.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's all for my report, and I'll certainly answer any questions that you may have.
Comments, questions? Don't think so. Thank you very much, we appreciate the information. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for zoning map amendment. And so I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Nar.
Good evening, Dr. Williamson, members of council. Tonight what we have before you is the city's proposing a phase two of the expansion of the central business district, and we're requesting a zoning map amendment. As part of a zoning map amendment under the Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Code, we're required to hold a public hearing for those that wish to speak either for or against the map amendment. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you. And one, just for the sake of everyone here, could you give the boundaries of the expansion?
The boundaries will be north of Third Street, between Elmira and Center Street.
Good. And that will be added to the exist-
Or Center Place.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That will be added to the existing central business district.
Correct.
And so, as the procedures always are for a public hearing, I'll give opportunity to anyone here who would like to speak, both in favor of the change and opposed to the change. And so I'll start by asking for anyone who would like to come to the front and state their name and address for the record, and have a couple minutes to talk about why you favor the change. I see no one coming forward, and so then I will ask if there's anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to the change. I see no one coming forward, and so I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
I hear a motion in a second. Mrs. Frank, on the motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the public hearing is closed. For the sake of Mr. Nar and him getting up and down, I will go ahead and jump down to number 10 on the agenda, ordinance amending the zoning ordinance. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and the map of the city of Williamsport.
Thank you. Is there a motion in a second to approve this ordinance in first reading?
Go move.
Second.
Hearing motion in a second, Mr. Nar.
What the city is proposing is a zoning map amendment to expand the CBD. Again, the area will be north of East Third Street, between Center Place and Elmira Street. It was reviewed by both planning and county planning, and they both gave positive recommendation. This is just more or less phase two of what we did in the last city council meeting, which we adopted the southern side of East Third Street, which will basically have the central business district on both sides of the street at this point in time. And again, it's merely for economic development during, in those areas.
Thank you. Comments or questions from members of council? The only thing I would add to that is, based on what you said last, I think it works really well to have zoning on both sides of the main streets, wherever that is possible. It's not always possible, but in this case, hopefully over time, a continuity and a flow can emerge as a result of having consistent zoning focused on the streets, or boundaries on the alleys, as it were, and not on the major streets in a particular area. So, I think this makes sense. If there are no other comments or questions from members of council, Mrs. Frank, on the ordinance in first reading.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the ordinance is approved in first reading. Thank you, Mr. Nar. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance in final reading, amending Article 917. Mrs. Frank, please.
An ordinance, an ordinance amending Article 917 designated as Philip E. Phil Preciosi Park.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the ordinance in final reading?
Go move.
Second.
Hearing motion in a second. Mr. Girardi, how are you this evening?
Good evening, Dr. Williamson, members of council. I have nothing further to add, it was just a correction of the description of the park, is what I did.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that ordinance is approved in final reading. Next item on the agenda is ordinance in final reading amending Article 321. Mrs. Frank.
An ordinance amending Article 117 general fee schedule. Whoops, I'm here. An ordinance amending 321 peddlers and solicitors.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to approve this ordinance in final reading?
Go move. Second.
Hearing motion in a second, Mr. Girardi.
Yes, the only thing I'd add to it is that this was just a correction on who actually would be enforcing it and how, who were enforcing it to.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, on the ordinance amending Article 321 in final reading.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the ordinance is approved in final reading. Next item on the agenda is ordinance amending Article 117. Mrs. Frank.
An ordinance amending Article 117 general fee schedule.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to approve this ordinance in final reading?
Go move.
Second.
Hearing motion in a second, Mr. Girardi.
Nothing to add.
Comments or questions? Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that ordinance is also approved in final reading. Thank you, Mr. Girardi. Actually, while you're up there, do you have anyone here representatives?
I have representatives for all four.
Okay, so while, again, to save your needs, and like we save Mr. Nar's needs, we might as well move forward on that. Next item on the agenda then is certificate appropriateness number 13 for 151 East Third Street. Mr. Girardi.
Yes, what you have before you is a request to paint the structure the following colors. I gave you a, actually, yes, because I did make copies of it, but sometimes the copies don't come out like they should. What they want to do is paint the walls of the building a lush, which is a green. There's two trims, one's a vanilla milkshake, the other one is a mannequin, a mannequin cream, silvery moon, and then the accent is a dragon's breath, which, like, again, you have all the colors up there. These are actually in standard with our requirements for central business color scheme.
Would you repeat those names again?
Sure. I figured you'd get a kick out of them, that's the reason why I don't want to-
Of course we do. We always love the color that they come up with for paints.
So that's what we have before you. I do have representatives here, if you have any questions of me or him or of the building, it's more than happy to answer those.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion in a second to approve this certificate?
Go move.
Hearing motion in a second. Comments or questions? Hearing none, I, well, they're not all labeled on here, but the, I particularly like the mannequin cream. If there are no comments or questions, Ms. Allison.
It's a beautiful building. Do you know what business is gonna go in here?
Yes, what the, what they're intending to put in is a brewery, restaurant-style business, and Mr. Girardi will be more than happy to come up and explain a little bit more about it. I do have the drawings that have worked, they're gonna be putting in a brewery, making their own brew, and also fine foods, so I wish to be here to come up. This is my business partner, one of my business partners, Andrea Raskowski, so go ahead, Andrea.
So, we are taking a historic building, and we've gutted it, and we're going to, hopefully, take the front and make it back to its original glory. It was built in 1870, so it's gonna be really nice to see that restored. And then on the interior, we want that to be a very comfortable place where we can have our, from scratch cooking, and our house-made brewery. Beer. Any questions?
Yeah, that sounds great, and thank you for paying attention to a building that's, you know, very attractive and had been left go a little bit. I was, I had gone by the property, and in the back, there's a nice yard back there, a nice, do you have any plans for that part of it?
That'll be parking, and we intend to have a outside seating, a small patio for when it's nice out.
Okay.
But primarily, we want parking.
Yeah, I thought, it looked like it would work for that, I just wondered if-
About 17 spaces.
All right. That's all I have, thank you.
Sure. Other comments or questions? Ms. Mealy?
Just this, I toured this property, what, a couple of years ago with you.
Sure.
And the property is spectacular inside, as well as outside, and we're exceptionally lucky that it's found such great caretakers, so it'll be exciting to see the exterior now, getting into, getting into shape as the rest of the neighborhood starts to shape up. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Other comments? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the certificate is approved. Next item on the agenda then is certificate for, of appropriateness for 19 East Fourth Street. Mr. Girardi.
Yes, this certificate of appropriateness is a request to place a wall-mounted sign on the building. The sign is non-aluminum, it's a quarter-inch brushed aluminum, made of, excuse me, made of a quarter-inch brushed aluminum, white lettering, it's approximately two foot tall by 13 foot long, it'd be about 31 up, 31 feet up above the sidewalk on the building. It's located on the southeast corner of the building, which is the corner of State Street and East Edwin Street, and I have attached a photo of where the sign's gonna be placed and what it's going to be, look like, and we also have a representative here if you have any questions.
Is there a motion in a second to approve the certificate? So move. Motion in a second. On this, I don't, in my mind, I was picturing it on the southwest corner, so this will be-
South?
East.
I believe it is south.
On Market and-
No, it's not on Market, it's on that, on back corner.
Oh, I see, okay.
Okay, so that would be the south east, I thought.
Southeast.
Southeast, okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I was just-
Facing the parking lot.
Right, I was picturing it as more of a drive-in kind of view, so thanks for the explanation on that. Other comments or questions? Ms. Mealy?
Just that I think it's a good idea to have a sign back there.
Sure, absolutely.
Excellent.
If there are no other comments or questions, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that certificate is approved. Next item on the agenda is a certificate of appropriateness for 452 Market Street. Mr. Jardi?
Yes, this is also a roof sign, marquee sign, to be placed on top of the roof of this building. The sign is externally illuminated, quarter-inch painted wood sign. The body is red, lettering is white and yellow. Sign's approximately five foot tall by three foot wide. It's located on the front of the building, facing Market Street, and I have attached a photo of the sign. Two things to note on this, the banners that go around across where the canopies were, were permitted to be up for 30 days, they'll be, they are removed at this point. They're no longer there. And I did talk with the owner of the property. It's his intent to take, when the weather gets warm, he's going to take a power washer and wash off the crayon or the chalk that says open and so forth. So basically, what he'll have is just that sign above there. And I do have a representative here if you have any questions of him or myself.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve this certificate?
One more.
Second.
Here, a motion and a second. Comments or questions? Ms. Mealy?
Just a quick question about the framework for the awnings that those banners are hanging from. What's the intention there? Are the awnings going to be reinstalled? I would assume that we're, we would require the frames to be removed if there weren't awnings?
We can have them required to be removed if he's not going to be using those. That's correct. I'm not sure what their intent is with those. You intended to use them for anything or?
New awnings.
New awnings. Okay. At that point, though, before you put them up, we need to approve it, come through for approval for colors.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, that's all.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? The banners, kind of associated with that, I was going to ask about the banners, but also the, the external sign on the door itself. I think it's an advertising kind of sign. Is that subject to the same 30-day restrictions?
I'd have to talk to Mr. Norris on that.
It's on the exterior.
On the outside of the door.
Mm-hmm.
It's on the outside of the door, I believe, in the way I'm seeing it. And it just came to mind because of, you know, just making sure we're all aware of what the rules are.
Where it says open?
Where it says play here, win here?
Yeah, that would actually pass it. It would be, I'd have to basically take the measurements of that just to make sure it's within square footage, and it would be something that would be permitted.
It would be permitted?
Again, I have to.
Or would it be treated as a temporary 30-day restriction kind of sign?
If you're looking to keep that out there, then it would be classified as a sign. It would be permitted, providing that meets square footage, total signs or the above signs.
Okay, okay, so it's, I know some of the sign ordinance rules and regulations are a little bit nuanced, and, and I thought I'd ask about it just so that, you know, I knew we'd have a representative here, and he'd probably appreciate being able to get the, the details of those nuances while he's here on trip one and not have a visitor later on down the road. Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, on the certificate of appropriateness.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that certificate is approved. Next item on the agenda is certificate of appropriateness for 45 West Fourth Street. Mr. Jardi?
Uh, yes. This certificate is for two signs. The first sign is a canopy-mounted sign. It's a quarter-inch plastic-coated aluminum. Body's gray, white, and black lettering. It's about... Okay, 10 inches tall by eight foot long. I'm sorry, I got, this is actually, the sign that's mounted on the canopy, I'll explain that when I, after I review the other one. There's a hanging sign that's three-quarter inch painted wood. The body's gray and white with black lettering. It's approximately one foot six inches tall by three foot long. The bottom of the sign is eight foot above the sidewalk. If you look, they gave us a drawing, a sketch, that shows the side view, okay? That's a hanging sign. It's going to be hanging, and that sign will be looking like this. It's only one foot six by three foot tall. It's tall enough that you can walk underneath it. It meets the ordinance requirements. There's several of them in the city right now that hang. The other sign that I talked about that's 12 inches, that's 10 inches tall by eight foot long. If you look at the photograph of the front of the building, you'll see there's a little sign next on the one, right-hand side that says Helping. Okay, the sign's going to be in front of the store. It's blank right there, okay, and that's where that sign's going to be. It's going to look same coloring, same style lettering, and the same airplanes will be on that sign, okay? And if you all remember, this was at one time Ozzy and Maze, the whole building. Now there's actually three tenants in this building. It used to be one restaurant. Sophia's in the back with her olive tree. That's the back of this building. You have this in the front, and then you have to the right of it, it's the Helping Hands. Sophia from the olive tree is no longer up there. She moving. She's relocating. We went through an approval process for her canopies and stuff last time. I know, you're looking like you're, that's why I would.
No, I, no, actually, we, we're just having a conversation about Sophia a couple of weeks ago, aren't I?
And we do have representatives here if you have any questions of them or myself.
Is there a motion and a second to approve this certificate of appropriateness? Here, a motion and a second. Comments or questions? Mrs. Katz?
About the sign itself, who are the representatives? Could you come up? I have, I have a couple of questions.
And when you come up, could you state your name and affiliation for the record?
Good evening. I'm Paula Hedrick with Little Jet's Boutique.
Thank you.
Question I have is, I'm looking at your description of your sign, and what I'm seeing here, and I wanted to clarify, is that chain links that are going to hold the sign?
It's going to be a very short chain, pretty close to the roof.
This is what I'm going to say to you. When I put my sign up the first time, I had the chains. Did not work. The wind breaks the chains. And just to, just to, just to give you some help, and to see something different that could be done with the sign, to have a metal bar or something, because it can get windy there, and, and this can destroy your sign immediately. And that was the only thing I wanted to say to you.
We actually had that in mind, but we are working with David Geisel from the sign shop in South Side. He's the one who's going to do that, and he didn't say yet if we're going to use chains, so I'm assuming, like, he knows better than we do about signs.
We can bring it up to him.
He does a lot of works here for business in the city, and I'm sure he's going to know exactly what's going to hold best, and, like, we thought about chain, but I'm sure he's going to bring something up for us.
Bring it up that chains can be very detrimental.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we just don't have that experience, but, thanks for it.
Since it happened to me, I know what happened, and I had to redo the whole sign.
Yeah, it's good to know.
And welcome downtown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, other comments or questions? Ms. Mealy?
As long as you're up there and as long as you're starting a business downtown, you might as well tell us about it.
Okay, we are two moms. We are opening a children's boutique. We're going to sell children's clothing, specialty toys, accessories, shoes, locally-made items. We are contacting local artists already. They've been reaching out to us too, and, because we are already on social media. We already have contract with a few people from here, and we're opening.
We're opening March 1st.
March 1st, opening our doors. And, yeah, we're going to be right there on 43 West Fourth Street. I know you mentioned 45, but it's 43.
Yeah.
West Fourth Street, right where Ozzy and Maze used to be, where their dining room used to be.
Do we have that little one working with you also?
Yep. A little helper.
That's fantastic, thanks. I'll be in. I've got a 15-month-old.
Any other comments or questions?
This is general, what age range for, like, the clothing?
Zero to 10.
Okay, thank you.
Both boys and girls, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
New place to get some cool stuff, sounds like.
Yep, very excited.
If there are no further comments or questions, Mrs. Frank, on the certificate?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the certificate is approved. Thank you, and welcome downtown.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jardi. Oh, that, that is true. We should do that. If you could introduce our other new business, we should have probably extended that opportunity to, for him to have a little advertisement for his business as well. We have just made that sort of a little tradition.
Yeah, I guess we might want to do that, yes. He is a gentleman who is the owner and facilitates the property and does certain things. Brad?
Yes.
He told us about your business.
My name's Brad Gordon from 1900 Riverside Drive in South Williamsport. This is our second store. George Lepel and I own the, at your convenience stores, and so again, this is our second store over here. We are lottery, tobacco, games of skill, vape products, and we just love to see people win. That's our big game plan. Also, in probably like two months, we'll have a beer license over there in South Side, so if you need some beers and you're over there, stop by. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, then we'll move up, back up to number 11 on the agenda, a resolution to approve a grant agreement. Mrs. Frank, please.
Resolution to approve a grant agreement between the City of Williamsport and the First Community Foundation Partnership of Pennsylvania for the Brandon Park Bandshell Improvement Project.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve this resolution?
One more.
Second.
Here, a motion and a second. Ms. Young, how are you this evening?
Fine, thanks. Council may recall that the city applied for this grant for the bandshell in July, and we requested a grant amount of $250,000. This grant contract is for $150,000, so it's less than what we requested. However, the foundation did receive requests in about, in the amount of about $6 million, and there were only $2 million available, and this grant was one of the larger ones to be awarded, so we're very fortunate and grateful to receive this funding. Other funding sources include $110,000 of 2019 CDBG funds and $20,000 of Lycoming County Act 13 funds. The total project cost is $280,000. The scope of work will have to be reevaluated based on the reduced funding, but the work will most likely focus on the necessary structural repairs. That includes repairing the wood floor, roof replacement, repointing of the brick, and the interior dome renovations. And my, my understanding is that Gannett Fleming is currently preparing a cost estimate and an evaluation of the structure, so once we get that, we'll be able to prioritize and, and look at the work moving forward. I did check with the foundation, and if it's necessary, we would be able to start the work prior to receiving the 2019 CDBG funds. Those funds will typically be received in the last quarter of the year, so if it's necessary and we need to move forward, the foundation will allow us to do that. This grant agreement was reviewed by the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy from Finance?
Yes, Finance reviewed this and forwarded to the full body of council with positive recommendation. I mean, of note, of course, is how grateful we are to receive funding for, funding from the foundation for this project, that we had a, a long discussion, a, a bit of a discussion at least, about the, the historicity of the bandshell. The, you know, it had its 100th birthday four or five years ago now, and, and was a completely community-funded structure the first time around, and, and we haven't done much maintenance to it, so it's high time. Also of note, I believe the construction of the entire structure was $2,500 the first time around, and we'll be putting $280,000 into it this, this year and next year to try and bring it back. Interesting what inflation does to construction costs. But we, we did have a discussion, of course, we, we had requested $250,000 from the foundation. We received $150,000, and that will affect the, the scope of the renovation project. We did have some discussion in Finance, since we won't be able to begin renovations until likely the next calendar year, because we won't receive 2019's community development block grant funding until the third quarter of this year, more than likely. And so first, we had a discussion about whether there were any elements that we needed to move forward with before we received the community development funding, and Ms. Young will be looking into that. Secondly, we had a discussion about whether or not there was any opportunity through our summer programming at the bandshell or otherwise to, to attempt to raise at least some small amount of funds in addition to, to what we currently have. I think it always does help when you say, we've got $280,000. We're just trying to make it a little further and do a little more good, so. But, but we, we batted around some suggestions. We obviously didn't reach any particular conclusions, and I'll let Mr. Allison or Ms. Ms. Katz follow up if they have any other, anything else that I might have missed from them.
Thank you. Comments or questions then from other members of council? Mr. Noviello?
I just, I just also want to thank the foundation for their generosity. It's a nice little opportunity for us to upgrade what I think to be one of our little city gems. It's been kind of ignored for some time here, so this donation and, and what will take place with regard to the renovations, I think, will help to not only preserve its history that we know of so much about, but I think it also helps preserve its, its future that we're looking forward to, so. The more of this, the better. And I thank Stephanie for her efforts, and certainly, once again, the foundation for contributing to the city in this fashion.
Thank you. Mrs. Katz?
There is some in-kind work being done in-house, right?
I believe so. Adam, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but there is some work being done in-house by Streets and Parks Department. I mean, they stabilized what they needed to last year.
We are going to do some of the brickwork in the corner. We're going to put in a cement block wall underneath the stage area for support. I think we're actually going to reevaluate it and see, once the, everything comes in from Gannett Fleming, what we can do in-house to hopefully offset the cost.
Which is going to save us a ton of money.
Yes.
All the way around, and we really, really appreciate that we can start doing more and more things in-house instead of taking it out and costing taxpayers a lot of money. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Allison?
When we were in the discussion about it, a local citizen, Bruce Huffman, who's up on the history of, of Williamsport and does a lot of research and is, is a valuable asset, told us how, how it got started, and it was privately raised money by churches, the $2,500, because back at that time, they needed some natural air condition, air conditioning during the, the summer months to have, it would help them to have services, and, and it was raised by the community and then used for other things, the repas ban and other things as well. Personally, I remember when I was a toddler, and we didn't live to...
When it was built?
Pardon, no, not when... They used to ask me, what was it like fighting the Civil War? We, my mother would take, take the kids and for the different shows there, in the, in the 50s that was. And, you know, there, there were different kind of programs, and there were community sings and, and musical things of that day. And of course, it's changed over the years. I'm just really pleased that we're able to repair it and keep it in good use for, for not just this generation, but that it can pass on to other generations for whatever community uses they, they have going or, you know, can envision at that time. It's become kind of a timeless piece of the park that's been used for a lot of good things over the years, and it's, it's nice to be a part of keeping that going. If anyone questions why we would spend money on that when we have so many other uses, that's a part of a quality of life thing that I think has been important to our community from the inception of the bandshell, and we're doing our part with the help of the First Community Foundation, a lot of help, to, to keep that going, so. But that, that too is in line with outside money coming in to, to keep it going, so we, hopefully, we can pass that part of the heritage along as well.
Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, on the resolution.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mealy. Next item on the agenda then is a resolution to reject a bid. Mrs. Frank?
Resolution rejecting all new exterior LED scoreboard and production equipment system bids for historic Bowman Field and authorization to rebid.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve this resolution?
One more.
Second.
Here, a motion and a second. Mr. Nichols, how are you this evening?
Cold. The house is cold for some reason.
Join the club.
Yeah, but thank you very much. This resolution before you is to reject the bids for the new exterior scoreboard and related production equipment for Bowman Field, and it also authorizes the city to rebid the project. The project solicitor did recommend this action based on the project team's review of the bids submitted and determined that there were technical issues, and also looking at the cost analysis, all that together, said to us that we need to rebid this project. Because of the complexity of the project, I requested that a pre-qualification process be added to the bidding process. This will require potential bidders to complete a form indicating that they can certify to six major requirements of the bid specification. These include that they can provide the minimum resolution that's required or the pixel count. They can provide the specified equipment or equal in terms of what we called for. They can meet the years in business in, in this related field. They will provide the required bond rated B-plus or better. They can support the 20-year useful life criteria, and last, that they can meet the project deadlines. And then we will include a form in the specifications that they must submit five days before bids are due. Also, RVTs and the city's IT managers reviewed the technical specifications and spent a lot of time looking at them and researching some things. lot of time looking at them and researching some things, and, and we put in some revisions to allow for different technologies that are now offered by the industry to reduce the price. And you will note in my memo, I included the new bid schedule with the hope that this can be awarded at the next city council meeting. As part of the bid award, I will provide you with an updated state RACB budget that we have submitted, a list of all the funding sources that are required, and a commitment from the crosscutters to extend their current lease, which is part of the overall project that we're pursuing. And this was reviewed by the Finance Committee on Tuesday, and this did include a recommendation to open the bids at the Finance Committee to expedite the process. So at 1:00, the idea is that the bids are due and will be opened and create a lot of excitement for the Finance Committee, I hope. With that, I'll defer back to the chair.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy?
Finance Committee has definitely been looking for excitement, obviously. It's kind of Mr. Nichols to add you up in this fashion. But, no, we, Finance did not review this item because it wasn't yet drafted during the Finance Committee meeting on Tuesday, but we did discuss with Mr. Nichols the necessity for a rebid and the addition of the pre-bid qualification element, and agreed that it seemed, especially on the advice of Jill Nagy, one of the solicitor dealing with this project, that, that it seemed was.
Okay. Thank you. Are there comments from members of, or questions from members of council? Mr. Novella?
Just very quickly, Bill, is this pre-bid circumstance something we could initiate with other bids coming?
No, this is something, I came up, and I've seen used before. We've never used it, but the project team looked at it and they thought it might be a good idea because something that's complex, you know, the, and I don't know much about pixel count, so resolution and equipment and the 20-year useful life and how they will supply, meet that after the warranty is up, the other things, the years of service, you know, really specifying, you know, what are, like the bonds, B-plus, so that they know that these six major items, if they can't meet them, then they shouldn't be bidding. And, you know, sometimes this, for some reason, with this project, they seem to not meet a lot of the different things and cause a lot of problems. So what we want to do is with these six major items, which we saw as an issue with the last bid opening, they need to certify they can meet those six different things upfront before we open bids so that they know that they can't meet them, they shouldn't be bidding. So hopefully, that will reduce the confusion, eliminate the confusion, so we have a real clean bid. And also, I do commend Josh and Chris. There's, you know, this type of technology, even though we used a consultant, they did a lot of research and found a couple of different ways we could save some money in terms of, you know, what we asked for. Reducing the number of pixel count a little bit, so it opens up a little bit more competition, and doing everything we can to make it as competitive as possible and getting us down, and hopefully, a lot lower than what our budget is.
Seems to me like a nice little safety valve, if it's possible to use elsewhere.
Well, it's a little redundant, but, you know, sometimes they just don't read the spec, you know, and, and for some reason, you know, submitting a bond that's C-, C-minus, you know, doesn't cut it. I mean, it's just, you know, so I guess we're just laying it out there. And so the form will be due, you know, when we have a, a pre-bid meeting or, or another meeting that we're having on, on this, another part of the project. So, you know, we just will make sure that they know what they're expected to do.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Absolutely. Other questions? Mr. Allison?
I have a question for, for Mr. Winder. And this is in relation to the current scoreboard we have. I've heard some questions about why do we, why does Bowman Field need a new scoreboard? I know you addressed some of the problems with the current one. Could you briefly?
The simplest thing is every time it rains, if the scoreboard's on, it ruins digits, it ruins circuit boards. The warranty was for 10 years. The warranty's been up for a whole year. Basically, every time Daktronics comes out and repairs that scoreboard, we can look at roughly a thousand dollar bill.
Okay.
So if six games, it rains, six times, we're bringing Daktronics out. It's got bullet holes. It's got multiple issues that they pretty much seem, couldn't seem to fix completely under the warranty for whatever reason. So it's definitely seen it's better yours. Maybe it wasn't the right one at the time. I don't know.
Do, do we know if the new one is going to be susceptible someday to those kinds of things, or is that not predictable? Okay. Other than the bullet holes?
Well, with a 70-year warranty and also, we have structured it such that, you know, technology changes by the minute almost, and, you know, that's a worry. So what we did is that we're going to, we said in the spec that after six years of experience with this board, we'll know pretty much what we need in terms of parts through a 20-year period, and they will have to certify or have that in inventory. So when we need those parts...
Right.
Which will be predictable, they have to supply them. So, you know, again, I think this really gives us updated technology. It'll be the latest technology, and, you know, we don't want to use any general fund money, and we'll be able to create new Bowman Field revenues through marketing and advertising, and, and, you know, and it will fulfill a mandate by the league, Major League Baseball, that they need this type of updated equipment because it fails more than it works right now. So, you know, we should be in pretty good shape. And the owner pledged $100,000 towards it, and again, with additional Bowman Field revenues and RVT, and so the expectation is no general fund money. And of course, we got a $600,000 RACB project. So, you know, we will make sure that, you know, funds are there to meet, and again, this is just the first part of it. So we'll see where we are after this part, and then we'll move on from there. So we'll be cautious as we move along, so there isn't any impact on the general fund.
Thank you.
And actually, save money for the general fund because of the repairs, which are, you know, the manpower and the parts and the time and all that, you know, right now, it's costing the city money, so.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
I appreciate the, the new process here and, and what, you know, looked to be very transparent. Just a question on process, though. I mean, typically, this goes through the committee with the resolution, but we didn't have that in the Finance Committee, from what I understand. I'm just wondering, is it just, this all just happened this week or something, or typically, you know, we'd have this ready for the committee? What's the rush?
Well, we worked, we worked right up to making a decision whether we were going to recommend awarding to, it wasn't a low bidder, it wasn't the next low bidder, it was not the next, the next low bidder, it was the fourth low bidder. And we struggled with that in terms of whether we should move forward or not because of the timing. And again, I deferred to Chris and Josh, to really, and, and the solicitor and everybody, and we worked right up to the last minute to make a decision whether to award it or not. And I made the decision that we were not going to award it because I did not feel comfortable, especially with the RACB grants, their requirements. At the end of the day, there was just too many questions. And so, you know, I, I made the, made the decision, administration, on behalf of administration, that I feel, felt, and came up with this pre-qualification process. You know, again, there's a lot of people involved in this, an architect, consultant, all that, but at the end of the day, you know, we have to do what we think is best, and, and, you know, we made the call, and, and I think by redoing it the way we are, typically Finance just reviews when we award something, but I wanted to do something, we haven't done that lately, but I wanted something, again, transparent, that we're rejecting everything, starting over, why we're rejecting the bids, and making very clear why and how we're changing the process. So that's why I wanted to go to Finance Committee.
And from a process standpoint, I would also say that they kept me informed about, one, the intention that, originally, the intention would have been a resolution to award the bid. Obviously, they weren't ready for that when the packets were assembled and the agenda was put together, and then ultimately, the decision to go this direction.
Right, and I can, you know, I can appreciate the, the situation to a degree. I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not as hesitant with this because it's a, it's a resolution to reject the bids, so I'm comfortable with that. I would not be comfortable, though, if it was a resolution to accept one of the bids and it hadn't gone through the normal process. So just to, you know, just to say, let's, let's make sure we're, we're going through that process. I think that's, that transparency is, is very important for, for everything. So just to stick with that.
No, we, most probably, I, well, absolutely, we would have probably waited, you know, for two weeks. We had that time to do that, but if we were going to publicly reject, then that's why I wanted to do it. So, yeah, I don't, we would not have been prepared to award that sit, if that's, that's our decision. We would have gone through the process, but we wanted to reject and get the process started again, so we just wanted to make, make it public and, and...
Right.
Offer the reasons why, is all. I mean...
And especially since the process will need to be repeated, there's some price, time pressure then for, you know, the, the bidding process to start so that ultimately construction can start hopefully in time for, for the season.
And that's why I suggested opening the bids at the Finance Committee, so we do go through the process, you know, to meet your concerns.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that's very important. You know, I appreciate that going forward. You know, we're going to, we're going to go through that process.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's difficult.
I agree 100%. It's, this is a bit of a struggle here because of the, new to me. I've learned a lot about, learned a lot about pixels.
Well, and, you know, and I do understand time constraints make things difficult, but then it's taxpayers' money, so we need to make sure, you know, that we go through all of those processes.
Again, that's why I wanted to do this publicly, instead of just, you know, we always put in our bid documents, we reserve the right to reject any or all bids, but given the complexities project, I felt it was necessary to have council officially understand what we're doing, why we're doing it, and so to, to meet your concerns, I guess.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the resolution. And just to clarify, for the record, a yes vote is to agree with the administration's recommendation to reject the bids.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Novella?
Yes.
Mr. Novella?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution to reject the bids is carries.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Nichols. Next item on the agenda is except for filing. We have the Brandon Park Committee meeting minutes of November 20th, 2018, the Shade Tree Committee minutes of also November 20th, and the Veterans Memorial Park minutes of November 5th, 2018. Is there a motion and a second to approve those minutes?
No move. Second.
Here your motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Mrs. Katz?
You know, I, I would hope people are aware of what the Veterans Memorial Park Commission does. When you read these minutes, it's incredible, everything that they go through for that park, and plus, if you go up there, I mean, it's, it's incredible to go see, and I, and I hope everybody does take the time out to go up and see what has been accomplished up there. They continuously work and bring new, new things in for, for our county and city, and I think it's, it's incredible. And I, I personally would like to thank them for what they do. And John Markley has really worked hard on this, and he's still selling bricks, if anybody wants to buy bricks.
Here you are. Any other comments or questions on the except for filing? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
And Mr. Novella?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and those are accepted. Next item on the agenda is announcements. I need to announce that immediately prior to this meeting, there was an executive session meeting of, of city council for the purpose of litigation, and so now that's publicly announced. The, immediately following this meeting, there will be a police pension board meeting. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on Thursday, February 14th at 7:30 here in council chambers. I would point out to the administration, especially those department heads that like to bring items, that is Valentine's Day, and so if there's a reason to shorten that agenda, there are probably some significant others...
Or eliminate it.
Or eliminate it.
This will be cooked all right.
There are probably some significant others in, in various parts of our lives that would appreciate it. The other upcoming meetings are Monday, February 4th. I suppose that there are two members of council, one who will want to be done with her day by that point, and one that will be start really in the midst of her day at that point. Other upcoming meetings are Monday, February 4th at noon is the Planning Commission, Tuesday, February 5th at 3:30 is the ERC Committee.
We may have some things to do, so.
It is advertised, so as of now, it's scheduled. On Tuesday, February 12th at 1:00 PM is Finance, 2:30 PM is Public Works, and at 3:30 PM is Public Safety. That brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. Are there any additional comments from members of council? Seeing none? Mayor, you or your administration? Thank you. Any comments from the general public? If you would, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record in three minutes. Please.
Hi, my name's Tia Shumichuga. I live at 1242 Park Avenue. Good evening, Dr. Williamson and members of council. I was originally going to speak on another matter, but after the town hall meeting on Tuesday night about the upcoming revitalization project on West 4th Street, I and other residents are concerned. For those of you from council who did not attend the meeting, the residents were informed that not some, but 51 trees were going to be taken down and not replanted. And trees are very vital. They help provide shade, they are a noise barrier to the, lots of traffic that is on West 4th Street. And after the meeting, or during the meeting, PennDOT did say that they would work with the residents who do want trees replanted and work with city council on the ordinance with the green space in between the curbs and the sidewalks. But besides the tree issue, we were also informed that Verizon might be putting poles up, so they'll have cable lines running up and down 4th Street, and that the street lights that are going to be going up are industrial-style, what you see on a highway, not something that we were assuming were going to be similar to the Maynard Street, streets lights that were put up. So when you take no trees and you add industrial-style lights and cable lines, you do not have West 4th Street looking like a community, you have it looking like old Interstate 220. So we're basically asking council to stay on top of this project and, you know, what we can do to keep it looking like a community and non-industrial parkway. And also for you guys to keep in mind that these three changes can also affect property value, diminish values of these property, of these properties, and then that's less tax dollars for you guys to collect eventually. In the long run, it's going to cost the city of Williamsport some money. So it's just some things to keep in the consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other comments from the general public? Seeing none? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.